Hello.
There you go. Good evening, everybody. It's the special city council meeting in Wood Creek, Texas. May twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, at six thirty P. M. Thank you all for being here. I will add that everyone rise for a moment of silence and stay standing for, I mean, for the places and then for a moment of silence and then stay standing for a place. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to be the head of this one state under God, one and indivisible.
Maybe we have one more of them want to speak.
Did you want to sign it for public time?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, she's signing, we can go ahead and take the role.
Yes, Mayor Joe Brasco.
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Dever Heinz, here. Councilmember Lainey Bailey, here. Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hambert.
Here.
Councilmember Krista Richardson, here.
Those are.
The core.
And you have a form, thank you. And we will leave off the comments. To remind everybody that we keep it to three minutes. Okay? And, um, and we, I mean, we can't really respond to you, but, you know, we can certainly listen. So, uh, we will start with Mr. Brian Webb.
It's like Bob go first, he's got.
I'll go first. I have the, I had the document paper. Yeah. Present to the mayor.
Absolutely. To our mayor, Phil Ten. And then there was probably a council member. And a council member, and a council member, and our other council member.
Okay, and I'll just read the letter to you. My name is Robert Azar, and I'm here on behalf of three other property owners on Deerfield Street.
Go ahead and stay seated. The camera can't see you.
Who what?
Don't sit.
Yeah. Hello, everybody. Okay, the council, uh, Deerfield Street is an absolute embarrassment. Over the last fifteen months, city council has teased us with a plan that would upgrade our street. You have even posted twice on our front doors notices of next week. We have asked in writing and verbally to explain to us why our street is picked last in the master plan of street improvements for the city of Wood Creek. We find it hard to believe that many of the now completed streets were more deserving than our Deerfield Street. Deerfield has approximately fifty-four current addresses with approved building permits at the end of our road for another eight. Deerfield is plus or minus a quarter mile in length. Understanding that our street is a multifamily, it is an embarrassment to market our properties to quality tenants. It is not fair for current tenants or landlords looking to improve our properties. The above petitioners request in writing a history of the selection process as to which roads were deemed necessary to improvements and in order of priority. Deerfield current petitioners represent twenty of the fifty-four addresses now active in our street. We have been the leading landlords in improving the quality of life, quality of the property, and for fourteen years average in paying our taxes. We deserve better. We have heard from, heard about the grants. We have heard about the need for endangered species reports. We have heard about the drainage. All we hear over the past two years is words. It's time for action. Should you need to take from your general funds and reimburse your coffers once a so-called grant is issued, I'd say it's time to do, and that's a great idea. This is not a threat, but we will seek legal counsel as to what the property owners can and cannot do towards the movement of paving our street. We are united, and we will continue in our effort to make this happen. Please provide answers to our request in writing. Please outline the council's process and the determination of which roads were deemed necessary and how the determination priorities were established for the road improvements to Wood Creek to date and your current plans in frame for the improvements of our road. I know a lot of you weren't on the council at the time that some of this stuff was done, so it may be need to re-impress your history. That should be good for you to re-impress, refresh your, uh, what's going on. But that's an absolute disgrace. I've seen this road here paved twice in fourteen years. And we have some evidence there. I yield and expect to some answers. I'll be the spokesman for the three, uh, three property owners in next meeting, next meeting. You'll have more there, too. We're, we're committed.
We're, because the. I am. I'd like to let our tenants have their, their turn, and then I'll go last. Okay. Shay, Tom, Ty?
Yep. Um, I'm shy, and I live at Tent Airfield, and I'm a tenant there. I've been living there for almost four years, July will be four years. And I've had personal experience with the potholes and the, um, the danger honestly that it poses because there's people that walk on, there's no sidewalks, which fine, most of the places around here don't have sidewalks. But when you have no sidewalks and you're trying to dodge potholes, I have accidentally almost hit pedestrians, and I drive safely and slowly on my road. And it's just, um, it's almost like Deerfield's like a little forgotten corner of, of Wood Creek, and the roads are horrendous. Um, so, and it's, it's just a constant trying to dodge potholes and miss people, and there's kids that play outside and ride their bikes, and it's a nice neighborhood, and we pay good money for rent there, too. And well, our living conditions in our homes don't match the outside at all. So I just wanted to make sure that it was also known that it's, it's an actual danger as well. Um, for pedestrians and drivers. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shaka. I literally wanted to say the same thing. Like, there's children playing, kids getting off the bus. So it's either endanger your vehicle, I, I drive a very low vehicle, or endanger somebody else, or completely stop traffic, and then other cars, you know, at a busy time can't get in. It's so honest to God dangerous. The road causes a big danger. That's what I came to say. I have a kid, and my, my cousin lives two houses down from me, and she has a small child. He's constantly playing outside, so just, just wanted to let y'all know where, be aware of how actual dangerous it is, not just cosmetically, but the danger that it's causing for, for us that was there.
Any other tenants on Deerfield?
So my name is Brian Webb. I own, uh, five Deerfield and ten Deerfield, and, um, as my tenant was saying, you know, it's, Deerfield's kind of looked at as the forgotten corner. It's the forgotten corner, except for if somebody leaves a, a washing machine on the front porch. You guys are Johnny on the spot to, to tell us that we're in violation. Um, my property taxes on my property went up fifty-two percent last year. Fifty-two percent, and I'm sure they're up again this year. I haven't seen them. So we're, we're responsible owners, but as people are saying, this is, this is ridiculous. I mean, I've, I've had the property now for twelve years, and the potholes have been there for twelve years. And I bet you guys are probably all residents of Wood Creek, and you wouldn't put up with this on your street for five minutes. We've been putting up with it for over a decade. So I understand that, you know, maybe there's a grant in place. Is Wood Creek only going to fix it if somebody else is paying for it? Or should Wood Creek go ahead and pay for it, and as Bob said, reimburse it when the grant comes in? But if the grant takes another year or two to get a solution for somebody else, are we going to wait that long? Why don't we figure out how to get it fixed? And at a minimum, why can't we get it patched? Let's get the, the potholes at least patched, because you're going to have to do that before you can repave it. So it seems like there's an awful lot we can do. I think people are starting to let you know there's safety issues. We're going to be on the record that you guys know that there's safety issues. And if you choose to not do anything, or say we're going to wait until the feds give us a grant, that's not right. We're paying our taxes. We paid our taxes. Our tenants pay their rent. They love living here. We want to be good citizens, but you guys as the council need to be a good representative of the city and take care of our street. Thank you.
Mayor, we are allowed to do one thing, and I would like, um, on the next agenda, this issue and see if we can have an updated report on what is happening. Um, I know the city manager previous to talk about what he has done.
We can get statements of fact. He did inform us that potholes have been built grants, and I don't live on Deerfield, so I did not drive over there and check. The grant was awarded. So that is there. Um, there is a process to that. There is also money left over in the bond project to fund additional road improvements. The purpose of seeking a grant for Deerfield was to do precisely what y'all are arguing about, meaning stop treating it like the little sister. Give it respect. Give it the work it needs. That grant will provide for better work than what was done through the rest of the city on a portion of Deerfield. The rest of the city is. So it, it will be getting better and more quality work.
It's not a matter of much words.
It is a bunch of words.
Again, so with that in mind, yes, so grants take cross time.
Yes.
We've applied, it's been awarded, you're now in the next phases, it will happen.
Well, we, I want to know why we're in the next phase. What was the priority of picking the street?
We can't, we can't.
We can't.
Please answer that. Please answer that. I request that in writing from.
Facts of the matter. Actually, I'd be happy to meet with y'all, you know, outside of council meeting, like anytime, anytime. Okay, that'd be great. We could walk the street.
All three are given priority.
Just out of curiosity, why was there a grant process for one street versus a bond process for?
Because it qualified for a grant process and earned us about half a million dollars to pay for extreme work.
Only to be spent on the street.
On Deerfield alone. So you all have half a million dollars dedicated to a fraction of the street size that the rest of the city stretched over, like, basically a mile. The same kind of investment.
So we should get sidewalks and.
The plans have been presented. They had to go back to the drawing board at that time pedestrian safety was implemented. The next round of plans might look a little different. All statements of fact, that's all we can do. We can't.
Thank you. That's, that's great information.
Maybe next week we can see the plans. We don't see the plans.
Last meeting.
Next meeting we can see the plans.
They were posted.
Oh, were they?
Previously, they're in it, but again, they, they had to be rethought. There were some things that were missing that were a little bit off for what our city needs. So if you look at those plans, they might not be what is ultimately brought back. They, there are a huge team of professional engineers addressing this. Um, basically, if anyone's getting gold star treatment, it is actually Deerfield. Unfortunately, there is a, a time component to that in regards to prioritizing of streets. All streets were prioritized. All streets were paved. Deerfield, because of the grant, that is the only reason why there is a timeline.
I do encourage you, um, to watch the city manager report from the five-eight council meeting. I do. That video is online, and there's chapters at the bottom of the timeline. Um, and that report was specifically on Deerfield.
Five-eight?
Five-eight. So if you like.
I just missed it a couple weeks.
Timeline, you'll see the chapters and just look at the report by city manager.
Thank you. That was very important.
Can you email any of us at any point in time? I apologize. This is, if you have been emailing anyone, it was not shared with me personally, and I would bet many of the council members about this, and.
Uh, this was our first start of the long process to keep reminding you every month.
Go ahead and go ahead and do it, right?
We'll see a bigger clientele here next month, believe me.
I, I know you're not joking.
Yeah, I know.
And, and we do appreciate your comment.
We want to be, we want to be good, you know, good owners, and you are. That's all we're trying to do. When you wake up one morning a year ago and you see next week your street is going to be paved, and it's not. And then the next month you say, okay, now we're ready. Here's another flyer on your door. Man, what happened to those grants a year ago? And like I said, a year and a half ago, a lot of you weren't even on the council member. But twice last year in twenty twenty-three, their flyer, somebody had to take the time to walk to our door and put a flyer and said, watch next week your car, we're going to be paving your road.
People actually came by and knocked on our doors and asked, like, and it was kind of alarming at first, how, how much do you make a year? And I'm like, that was, and, yeah, people walked around and asked, like, our yearly income, telling us that this is four roads, and sometimes they will come, and it looks like maybe they filled a couple potholes, and then it rains once, and it's right back to the way it was, so.
Well, that, that one city council we had where they hired a guy from our time with the bag, whatever it was, and he walked the streets with his truck, and he cut a bag and threw it in the hole, put some water on it, did this. Some of you may know what I'm talking about. That was embarrassing. That was absolutely a joke. I don't know how much money he spent on that guy or that idea, but whoever had that idea would be fired off.
No, they don't work.
We need to.
That was, okay, hold on.
We, we really.
Thank you. We'll see you next month.
Public comments is a strange time because, you know, we want to have a conversation, um, and we're not allowed.
We'll see you next month.
So, but you have my card, you know, I will, I will be with you anytime, anywhere.
Thank you. So I had.
Nice meeting.
That's a problem. I have oil in my car. I take one of those waters with me, but I didn't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, y'all.
Thank you, Al, for coming with you. Thank you. People get a vision for everybody. Okay, um, first off, on the regular agenda, is to discuss, take appropriate action on the resignation of city manager Kevin Rule. I mean.
I move that we accept the resignation of city manager Kevin Rule.
One second. Okay, so you have read the center two pieces. All right, thank you.
It's a, a formality. Um, he has submitted his resignation in the letter. It is in the packet publicly posted for everyone to read, so.
Okay, um, any discussion on this piece of it? Okay, the motion is to accept the resignation of city manager Kevin Rule. So, um, let's go ahead and call the rule.
Mayor Lieutenant Dever Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Lainey Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambert.
Aye.
Councilmember Krista Richardson.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Five eyes and a day that passes unanimously. We're going to pick up the qualification.
I move that we approve the post news qualifications after edit and approval by Mayor Roscoe.
One second.
I'm sorry, after edit and.
It is an approval by the mayor. I have, I have one question. What kind of edits would that, would that be as far as posting qualifications? And how would it be different than the previous qualifications that I had? Um, just working from the, from the draft that we got, this one went out, um, two years ago. And there is a couple of things I'm talking about, like reporting relationships was one.
About you.
I had a question. I had a couple of questions, you know, just in, in general. Um, and then people had a chance to look at it and, and as some others, but, I mean, the nothing's a, you know, tremendous substance. Um, you know, some of it is just updating.
So there was some idea of putting the, the RFQ in this packet. It's a little bit rushed to get into that and then trying to edit that all together as a group right now. So the concept being, we're going to approve the posting for the job right through this. We need to tweak the job qualifications as we've already talked about. There's a, a couple of things like Fund U and the new website for the, for the, our website, right, that somebody would ideally have previous training in. Now, if anyone has additional edits or things, I think it's very perpetuism to Mayor Roscoe. There typically the RFQ is a little bit of an administrative function, so not all of them have to come before council for council edit. Council can also request it to come back for, for, but the idea being that, like, you know, just to go ahead and get the process going and knowing that we had a couple edits, so we didn't have a final draft to get in time for everybody in front of this, for this meeting. Um, if that makes sense.
So the proposal is looking over, uh, it's update, and we're approved at that point, pre-approved at that point to get it out to the proper posting authorities, CML, newspaper, et cetera. That's what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
Does everybody have a chance to look at it and see if there's any updates they would like to see? That would be important. This is, can we?
I haven't had time to go.
Can I, can I just, uh, this is winged thing. Um, if you could have them look somebody by Monday? Is that fair enough?
What I have is, um, what was previously posted. That's it. If that's it, okay, all right, yeah.
Exactly.
So I haven't gone through it carefully, but it's pretty thorough.
But is that timeline acceptable to you, Councilmember Bailey, is what Mayor Roscoe was asking? If, if you did want to review it and provide edits to Mayor Roscoe, is Monday an acceptable timeline? And are you okay with the qualifications being posted after that? That's what we're considering.
Yeah.
And then you forward the edits to me?
Oh, I'll be working with you on the day. So any further discussion?
We'll find Monday.
Well, my off Saturday, you did two or four, but, um, I've been spending, you know, as much time as I can there. So, um, I haven't looked at my schedule for Monday, but I would just say, if you have it by news Monday, that'd be plenty of time. And if I can get word from everybody before then, I'll just get started with it. So I'd already done a couple of things. I mean, it's like those ones. So, um, so, uh, let's go ahead and stick with the roll of all votes for, through discussion. On the, the second motion.
So we're voting to approve the posting qualifications after edit and approval by Mayor Roscoe. Councilmember Lainey Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambert.
Aye.
Councilmember Krista Richardson.
Aye.
Mayor Lieutenant Dever Heinz.
Aye.
Five eyes and a day, motion passes. Um, item number two, a discussion to take appropriate action with removing, uh, sir Rule and retaining Mayor Roscoe, Mayor Lieutenant Heinz as Texas Regional Bank signatories. And that's a kind of a in the motion in a second.
I move that we approve resolution, re, not, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash oh-five dash two-nine dash oh-one as placed in the packet, removing Kevin Rule as the bank signatory and retaining the remaining ones.
One second. Yeah, this is a formality. They have to have it in the box.
So essentially, we already did this thing, resolution, and then you know, we're just removing Kevin, and then when we do hire a new city manager, we'll have to do it again to place them back on.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and take the rule, please.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambert.
Aye.
Councilmember Krista Richardson.
Aye.
Mayor Lieutenant Dever Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Lainey Bailey.
Aye.
Five eyes and a day, and we'll move on to item number three, which is to discuss and take appropriate action on about the amended ordinance for title three, administration, chapter thirty, the governing body. Um, and then a motion.
I move that we amend ordinance title three, chapter thirty.
One second.
I was going to state the actual thing, but that's okay. Um, the item I'm wishing for us to consider this evening is the one provided by our attorney. The one in the packet is essentially a placeholder. It did have extra things for consideration on it that could be discussed and brought back at a later date, but essentially, due to the nature of, um, the purpose of this meeting in particular, the ordinance provided by the city attorney only seeks to amend one portion on section B. So if you look at this copy that does not have a watermark on it, um, if you look at line number forty and forty-one, it says, "In the event of a vacancy in the position of city manager," or sorry, city administrator, "the mayor shall have all the power and authority provided to the city administrator in section thirty dot fifteen." Um, the goal of this being to keep the city running, obviously, um, and to eliminate any kind of confusion as to who is in charge of what at this point in time to keep the business streamlined.
That is correct. Exactly what I'm, and a little back for a, you know, like, um, we went through this when city manager Lewis left, and we were sort of, sort of, you know, question marks as the, you know, who could do what, and, you know, the mayor is not considered staff, and the vendor wouldn't work with anybody that's staff. Um, and we never went in and amended the ordinance after that. And so, um, when Kevin ruled that, I called the city attorney and said, what do we do? You know, I know I can't be, you know, acting city manager. I can't hold two titles. None of us can hold, you know, two titles at the same time on that. Um, so he said, said, you just need to adjust your ordinance that, so they said that if the, if the city manager is not in place, that the mayor takes the, you know, takes over the, the duties until, you know, obviously, the city manager is in place. So that's all it does. Questions, discussions? Point the border. All right, so follow the rule, please.
Councilmember Bob Hambert.
No.
Councilmember Krista Richardson.
Aye.
Mayor Lieutenant Dever Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Lainey Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Washington Heights.
All right, the eyes have it. Four eyes, one day, motion carries. Um, any announcements?
I move, well, never mind. Is it the things for the next agenda? And to back up with Councilmember Grummer's side.
Yeah, the, the, it's not on the, it's not on the agenda that we can use.
I have a quite a nomination on the June, so I wasn't at the last meeting. I've heard that something or some things have been, were tabled to that meeting.
All the financial.
Yeah, all those financials.
So there are, it'd be a very crowded.
Yes.
And there are also, there are also some, um, some routine annual things that we need to do that are on the agenda. The, the city secretary has already, um, uh, put into a draft, um, including the election schedule, budget schedule, calendar. Um, it's one of the things that, that we just have to do as part of this manual process.
So I don't have an announcement, but I would like to request that maybe the mayor consider holding a coffee here, and then we personally invite the Deerfield residents to attend, and obviously, you can vote it publicly, so anyone can attend. But I think I'd like to, essentially clearing up some of their confusion and concerns, and then making sure they just have a direct line moving forward so they feel, you know, uh, informed on the topic. Rather than a formal meeting, you know, can be more conversational.
Uh, or we've done it before for Zillow's private, so we'll, 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 so.
Thank you, man. That would be wonderful.
It's like I said, I'll meet with you anytime, anywhere. I mean, I, um, and, and we can't discuss it, that's not on the agenda, so, um, just as far as it goes, we'll, 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 um, there's no further discussion.
Well, to someone, for helping me, this may not, this may just be administrative, but that we need to apply for fourth of July.
No, it's a N E T G, and F W.
For, for in a parade, for flow?
Oh, oh, we're going to have a, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Not a, I mean, so, so. That's just an application if we're going to have a flow to the fourth of July, right?
Oh, gosh. I thought you were talking about the event here, like the fireworks thing. I was like.
Yeah, my heart started beating.
Okay, no.
So here's a member of the chamber.
Karen.
No, that may be one of them. I know I am, um, and we have a city here.
I go to the L. D. R. Y. L. M. So.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, um, yeah, I mean, uh, I, I would like to have this city. So, yeah, I'm just, I'm just, um, yeah, I mean, uh, I, I, I've got that as city representative and, and, again, that was fun, so, okay. But that almost. Now, enter the motion.
Motion for adjournment.
Okay, all right.
Right at seven.